Good evening, welcome to the May 23rd, 2022 Troy City Council meeting. We are honored this evening to have Pastor Stephen Conaway from Troy Seventh Day Advantage Church to provide our invocation this evening, so please rise for the invocation and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance after.
Let us bow our heads. Father in heaven, we are grateful for the privilege and opportunity to be here to conduct business that helps to advance the health and welfare and well-being of the citizens of the city of Troy. We ask for your divine wisdom to be in this place, that the decisions that are made and the things that are discussed will be done in a way that makes everyone have a sense of belonging and their importance and their value, and that the prosperity of the city might be wrapped up and tied up in all of the discussions for this evening. I pray, Father, for those who are grieving. I pray, Father, for those who are disenfranchised. I pray for those who are burdened with fear, or whatever else they may be burdened with tonight. I ask that the leaders of this city would keep and bear those things in mind as they trudge through their own difficulties. I pray grace for them as well and their families, and I pray for the prosperity of us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. The May 23rd, 2022 Troy City Council meeting is officially called to order. We'll ask for the roll call from Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Eric Sangal?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
All present this evening. First up are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one at this time, C1, service commendation for Fire Chief, retired Fire Chief, Richard Chuck Reister. Chuck, if you want to meet me at the podium, I'd love to present this to you. I think this side. Thank you. No, no, it's fine. I can tell you've worked for a while for the city because it's really small font. So let's get ready for this one. Listen, we said goodbye officially to our Fire Chief, Chuck, a couple of weeks ago now, it seems like. Yeah, end of April, but we had to, of course, get him here to give him the service commendation and officially recognize all of the service to our city. I told him when I got here, I said, Chuck, we've been saying nice things about you for a few times now, like, I'm kind of done, like, I don't have anything else to say. But I've got this commendation here to read into the record, which I think is very important. This is a service commendation for Fire Chief Richard Chuck Reister. Whereas in May 1982, Richard Chuck Reister began his volunteer service with the Troy Fire Department at Station 3. He joined the Roseville Fire Department in 1984. He served as a volunteer in Troy until he joined the Livonia Fire Department in January 1986. And whereas in 1989, Chuck was hired as the Fire Education Specialist for the City of Troy Fire Department, assigned to provide training and public education. He conducted two firefighter recruitment training programs annually to qualify Troy and members from other area fire departments to become state-certified firefighters. He also developed and presented various public education programs for local schools, businesses, and homeowner associations. And whereas Chuck and his family moved back to Troy in 1991, and he rejoined as a Troy volunteer firefighter. At Station 3, he served as firefighter, lieutenant, station training officer, and station assistant chief. Chuck also served as president of Station 3's social group, coordinating all social activities with the station assistant chief. And whereas on the fire career path, Chuck was promoted to fire lieutenant in 1998 and assigned to fire prevention as a fire inspector. He performed fire and life safety inspections in commercial and industrial facilities, developed an electronic process to provide firefighters with hazardous material right-to-know information, and coordinated inspections with contractors during new construction. He also provided life safety oversight for large-scale events, including the Ryder Cup and visits from President George W. Bush and Vice President Dick Cheney. And whereas Chuck was promoted to assistant fire chief slash fire marshal on December 4th, 2015, his duties were to ensure code compliance for fire and life safety throughout the city, provide life safety oversight for large-scale events, including a visit from Vice President Mike Pence, and attended meetings for code development and improvement. And whereas on February 5th, 2021, Chuck was promoted to the position of Troy's Fire Chief. His duties were to ensure code compliance for fire, life, and safety. That was repeated. Just seemed you were paying attention. In this role, he served in a command and oversight role during several major incidents, including a structure fire, which we probably remember, involving a 67,000-plus square-foot industrial building, northbound I-75 south of Big Beaver, a fire involving a 14,000-gallon fuel hauler, and provided direction to the department and community during one of the worst health crises in the nation's history, COVID-19, of course. And whereas Chuck also provided background information to city council so that funding of $2.7 million could be secured after the catastrophic failure of three apparatus in one year, reestablished the Troy Fire Department Honor Guard, and implemented a standalone software package for tracking, reporting, recording, equipment maintenance issues for oversight of operations. And whereas Chuck is a graduate of the National Fire Academy with certifications in education and fire protection systems, and a member of Southeast Michigan Association of Fire Chiefs, North Oakland Mutual Aid Association, South Oakland Fire Association, Oakland-McCombe Fire Prevention Society, National Volunteer Fire Council, and National Fire Protection Association, he is also a certified fire instructor. And whereas Chuck retired from the city of Troy on April 29th, 2022, and will now enjoy more time with his wife Sue. Hi, Sue. They've been married, they'll be married 40 years on July 23rd, 2022. Daughter Breann and son Matthew, as well as enjoy traveling, visiting family, and enjoying the opportunities provided by a planned retirement. Their first trip will be back to Colorado where they spent their honeymoon. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy take this opportunity to express their appreciation to Fire Chief Chuck Reister for his professionalism and his many contributions to the Troy Fire Department for the betterment of the community. And be it further known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Chuck during his well-deserved retirement years. Chuck, it's presented today, this 23rd day of May 2022, signed by myself as mayor and all members of council. I present it to you officially and say congratulations, and you'll be missed.
Thank you very much.
I tell you, Chuck said goodbye like three or four times already, but tonight I think we have something special, so go ahead, Chuck.
Well, after 40 years, and you spend the last year coming before city council, you don't come without being prepared. So one of the first things I'd like to offer is my thanks to the mayor, council, for the support of the fire department, the continued support, what we do and how we do it. I need to extend my appreciation to the city's executive staff. The city manager and his direct reports are directly responsible for making sure that the services that are provided to the community are top-level, and they always are. I would like to thank the members of the department, my fire department staff, my former staff, for their continued commitment to the goals of fire and life safety. They continually go above and beyond expectations just to ensure that our firefighters are always prepared. I need to thank our volunteer firefighters. These are folks, your neighbors, your coworkers. They give their time and talents to make this place work. They participate so whenever their neighbor needs them, they're trained and they're ready to help. My father was a firefighter, as are two of my brothers. I began my journey over 40 years ago, as you heard, and originally I believed it was to follow the path that my father laid out, but I was mistaken. In 1981, I started as an EMT for a local ambulance company. I learned that working with others for others is one of the most noble callings. Then came my opportunity to join the fire service. Have to find my spot, too. Initially, I started as a volunteer, as you heard. As I proceeded along my career path, I worked for several departments and eventually made my way back to Troy. Fathers don't want their children to follow in their footsteps. Fathers understand hardships of life. Fathers, parents in general, understand that the path may change as you encounter challenges. Fathers want their children to have a better life than they did, so like my father, I worked to help my community in both a career and a volunteer setting. I accepted my assigned roles, I met the challenges that were presented to me, and this gave me the opportunity to meet and work with so many knowledgeable and incredible people. Together, we found a way to make this town just a little bit better. Along the way, my path brought me to eventually lead the finest group of emergency responders in the United States. I've been asked several times why I decided to retire, and while contemplating that decision, I realized three things: I have enough, I've done enough, and I am enough. So after 40 years of being on call, I've decided that I like the quiet life. The fire department staff that I leave behind is positioned to continue the department forward. I believe the leadership is trained and prepared to continue what is best for the firefighters, what's best for the community. And finally, I have to thank my family for supporting me on my journey. My family have been strong supporters of my choices, but most of all, I have to thank my wife. It's been said that if you think that the life of a firefighter is difficult, try being a firefighter's wife. She filled my role at home while I was supporting the community, and when a decision needed to be made, she was there to support me. I could not have accomplished this goal without her. So now, as I step aside for the next generation, I have a simple request for the community: find a way to volunteer. People think it takes bravery to be a firefighter. The bravery comes when you fill out the application. The rest of it is just part of the job. So thank you, council, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation. Thank you, staff, for all the support, and thank you all for giving me the honor to serve.
This city has a long history of having really wonderful fire chiefs that leave the department in better shape than when they came in, and I don't know how, because it's so good already, but Chuck, you did just that, and you've left the fire department in even better shape than when you came in, and we appreciate you for that. And I got to be honest, you and Sue look so light and relaxed now that you're both retired, so I wish you all the best, and I know we all do and city staff do. So congratulations and God bless you, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations that are pre-printed in the agenda packet this evening. There are no carryover items or public hearings, so we move on to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have two people signed up this evening. As always, you know, our rules of procedure are printed in our agenda packet. You have three minutes. When the light turns yellow, you have one minute left, and at red, it's time to stop. So first up is Michelle Palace.
Hi, everyone. I'm so glad to be here and have a chance to thank you for everything that you've done. I really do appreciate it. I'm here today to speak to you about the proclamation for just setting a date for ending gun violence awareness. And I read through, thank you very much, it's a good first step, but it's just a first step, and I have some suggested changes. So I brought just this many. Some changes I noticed that were made to the proclamation that differed from what was recommended by moms that I thought were important were, first of all, it was changed from the day, first day, June 3rd this year, as Wear Orange Day to the month. Yay, the month. At first, it kind of sounds like a really great thing, but I don't have a month's worth of orange to wear, and I'm sure all of you don't either. And it just, it calls out the significance of a national effort of saying, on this day, we're all in solidarity behind the fact that we need to admit that our gun violence situation is not acceptable. So I would say that one of my recommendations would be, yes, keep the month, but state that the June 3rd is Wear Orange for awareness. The other thing that I'd like to just say about wearing orange is that the story about wearing orange is important as well. And the whole idea that the reason why we wear orange is because hunters wear orange to signify that you are a human being. You are not a deer, you're not a fowl, you're not, we're not hunting you. So the idea of wearing orange and the story behind it, I think, is important. However, it's not, I think people, I don't think it's worthy of a change in the declaration. The other thing is that was missing that really meant something to me was the terms victim and survivor. I am a survivor of gun violence, and for me to be eliminated and not called out and not made aware of the fact that I'm not alone, I think, is an important part of this proclamation. And I would like to interject or suggest that we move back to that terminology, victims and survivors, and that's what this is about. The other thing I'd just like to say is that some of the words that were taken out, they were removed because they're difficult to talk about, they're hard, and they're hard for us to admit. Things like gun deaths, suicides, domestic violence, Second Amendment rights, all of these are words that make people uncomfortable, and they were replaced with some-
That's your three minutes, Michelle. Can you finish up in 30 seconds?
I can.
All right, 30 seconds, okay.
I would like, just like to say, I'd like to put in the actual purpose. What happened to setting aside one day to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Justine Gilbreath.
Evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to thank the council for proclaiming June as Gun Violence Awareness Month. This is the fifth year in a row that Troy has made this proclamation, which nationally, the first day of Friday in June, the first Friday in June is Gun Violence Awareness Day, although I don't mind that it is a month in Troy. What Wear Orange, as we call it, calls attention to is the 110 Americans who are killed every day by gun violence. Seven of these Americans are children, and then more than 200 Americans are shot and wounded each day. In our state, 1,270 Michiganders die by gun violence each year, and our country, nearly 40,000 Americans die by gun violence every year. Two-thirds of them are gun suicides. All of these people deserved better, and each death or injury creates a ripple effect of loss and grief in their communities and families. We've become a nation of survivors. Oakland County is one of the most recent communities to be devastated by one of the most horrific kinds of gun violence, if they can even be differentiated, the school shooting. As we all know and continue to mourn, four precious young lives were lost to gun violence last November in Oxford: Madison Baldwin, Tate Meyer, Justin Schilling, and Hannah St. Juliana. They will be teenagers forever. Seven, six other children were wounded as well as a teacher. Thousands were traumatized, and entire community and those around it are suffering the fallout of this trauma and loss. Most of us know people who live in Oxford, who graduated from there or teach there, or was a child in the Oxford schools. I watch my teaching partner at Bowling Park worry about her 11th-grade daughter Nora, who attends Oxford High. She was present in the hallway that day, and she suffers with the memory of what she heard, and she must walk the hall where her fellow students died. I watch my own students jump when a school-wide announcement comes on at an unusual time, and I shake my head during our Alice drills. I worry that if the custodian leaves my classroom door unlocked, what if I don't notice it? What if we have an intruder and it takes me too long to find my key and lock down my room? What if I someday have to choose between protecting myself for the sake of my own children or putting myself at risk to protect my students? I think about how my generation is the last to grow up not knowing the term "school shooting," how lucky we were that this was not one of our worries. I look at my own children and my students, and I am so sad for them because at this moment in our country, school gun violence is just this thing that can happen, possible or even inevitable, like a fire, destructive weather. It shouldn't be, and that's what Wear Orange declares. It began in 2013 when friends of a Chicago teenager, Hydia Pendleton, started wearing orange in her honor. Hydia had been a bright and talented high schooler. The week after she returned from marching in President Obama's second inaugural parade with her high school band, she was caught in the crossfire of city gun violence and killed. Her friends chose orange because it is the color hunters wear to be safe. Orange means don't shoot. So I wear orange for Hydia, and for Madison, and Tate, and Justin, and Hannah, oh, shoot, I'm almost done, and Nora.
30 seconds?
Yes, yes, yes. And Nora, and for my students, and for my children, and for all the families mourning a loved one, and for all the parents who make sure they never forget to hug their children before they head off to school for the day. Thank you for wearing orange tonight. I hope people will wear orange on Friday the 3rd and the following weekend. There are events in McCombe County and in Detroit and in Pontiac on the 3rd, 4th, and in Pontiac, it's May 30th, and I hope that others will join this movement in remembering these folks and honoring those who are still here. Thank you so much. I appreciate your orange tonight and for the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those who have signed up for public comment this evening for items on the agenda from Troy residents. Now's an opportunity for city council or city administration to respond or reply. I'm going to hold my comments until the referral comes later might be best, if that's okay. All right. There are no postponed items this evening, so we move on to regular business. There are no mayoral appointments for boards and committees and no city council appointments for board and committees this evening. I-2 is board and committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations or city council nominations this evening. So we move on to I-3, which is a request for closed session. I'll move I-3, be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.2681E, Greer versus Troy et al., and MCL 15.2681E, Darling versus City of Troy et Millar.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve I-3, the request for closed session as read into the record and printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will recess into closed session at the end of the public meeting and adjourn eventually from in there. Next up is I-4, the Business Community Engagement and Priority Assessment, and that'll be introduced by Assistant City Manager Bob Bruner, I think.
Yep. Thanks, Your Honor. We have now completed our third survey, going back to the library survey that was conducted by Cobalt and then the resident survey that was conducted and presented last year. And so the memo outlines the steps that we took distributing the survey in January and February, receiving the data, and now Will Saintemore from Cobalt Community Research is with us again to present the results.
Thanks, Bob.
Will, can you hear us?
I can see his lips moving.
Yeah.
Will, we can't hear you, but you don't look, oh, now you're... You know, the irony is, I think, over two years is the first time we've had any technical difficulties like this.
Tempting fate.
Maybe have him log out and log back in or something? Is that... It's this great television.
Well, while we wait for William, I can tell you, I don't know if me reading the memo makes for better television, but here we go. On June 22nd, 2020, city council awarded contracts to Cobalt Community Research for resident survey, business survey, and library survey. As I mentioned, the library survey was conducted in July of 2020, and the resident survey was conducted in January and February of 2021. Cobalt Executive Director Will Saintemore presented the results of the resident survey in April of 2021. Then we started working on the business survey. City staff presented city council with a draft business survey back in December 2021, and worked with Cobalt to finalize and distribute that survey. We conducted the first mailing of 2,050 businesses in January this year, and then a second mailing in February to those who had not responded. Data analysis was completed in April, and hopefully William will come back and present those results shortly.
We see you, Will. We don't hear you yet.
Should be coming through.
Why don't we take a five-minute recess and see if we can figure this out? Otherwise, we'll just move on and come back maybe if it needs more than that, okay? We're in recess for five minutes. We're in recess for five minutes.
Test, 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 test. Test, test.
All right, we have you.
Test, test, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right, very good. Let me share the screen from my side, because it seemed to be when we got kicked off from an audio standpoint.
Back on the record.
Are we good to go?
We are here, back on the record, Will. Welcome. We can very much hear you.
Yeah, exactly. So while we're taking through some of the basic background information as far as the project, you know, if you're trying to achieve, the bottom line, just to really jump to the key, is that the city did perform very well with all of the measures that we look at. You're rather better before public benchmarks that we're looking at as well. There are several areas that have the most impact in terms of, they have the most leverage to which your score is longer, and those are listed as the drivers. So there's the regulatory environment, the growing business, in the same cooperative, collaborative environment, city management, and economy. It's not that these are low scores, but these are the ones that they get the most coverage. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight through the bottom line slide, too, is that overall, businesses are very optimistic about your ahead. Forty-six percent say that they plan on increasing employment. Only four percent expect the public to contract, so the rest is staying above the same. Nineteen percent are expecting to see space needs increase over the next year. Only six percent reducing, so the rest will be steady where they're at, so very desired. A few other things to keep in mind as we looked at the data, that there is pretty limited awareness of the city's socioeconomic, economic development specialists, so making sure that's something that's a bit more visible as you can use staff media, the gravity of position. When we look at things that really rose to the top of mind for your businesses in terms of the positive visiting location was clearly number one. Road maintenance, just generally the city being kept out of the problem, and then police and fire response. So a lot of very strong positive comments about your public safety. As far as things that people share, number one is that they weren't necessarily aware of the regulatory things that they need to deal with. So more clarity on that would be helpful. Sign regulation came up in a number of different places, and also more small business support. So with that, I will start diving into some of the detail. If you have questions, feel free to ask, because we're going to want to sit down and flag you down. They don't need another audio. So over on the far right-hand side, you can see your residential score and your business scores. So it scales from 0 to 100, and so you can see all right over here, the score overall for local group satisfaction for your businesses was 70. It was a 72 for your residents. And then if we look at Michigan, for some of these, has to be the Midwest for the US, you can see that they're well above those particular thresholds. You're doing really well. Meanwhile, similar sort of story, particularly for businesses, they give you a very high mark there. Community satisfaction also very high compared to the rest. And then the rest of the things at the bottom of the chart is just to give you a bit more context in terms of, you know, county governments, state governments, IRS for both large and small files, it's always good to inform IRS. And also the overall customer satisfaction index score, which includes both public and private home together, you got 75, you know, within the margin of error of IRS. So you're really doing well. Methodology, talked about that, so we made it out to about 2,000 folks, we grew it back from 146. The bulk responsibility for the small businesses, too. There were a couple of factors that affected the response levels. One is probably there's a lot of turnover, there are a lot of closed stores that's happening, not up and running as they were, or if they were, you know, folks were pretty busy right now, not a lot of staff. The other issue is that the current databases that the city has doesn't have the first and last names of key contacts for all the businesses. So that was another factor that impaired your response rate today. But overall, it's a solid response rate. It gives you a good baseline for what you're doing now, so that as you build and move forward, you can really see how you're impacting those key scores you decide to focus on. You've seen this kind of chart before. We've got a ton of detail that's available to all of you. The survey, and we give you the summary of it, and then we give you the breakdown by different cohorts of businesses. In this case, it's just a couple of time business employees. We also have industry, do they own, do they rent buildings, where they do business. There's a whole host of ways to break the information apart. Your higher scores are blue, your lower scores are in kind of a red. And if you drop down a column, that tells you, in this green case, it's instantly colored like this one over here, it tells you that regardless of cohort, people are having a pretty similar experience, they have similar opinions about the city. If you get a little bit more check ring, that means that, you know, there's a little bit more diversity, and so you want to pay attention to what some of those differences are. Some of the groups are a bit smaller, that's where you see the asterisk here, that there aren't as many people in that particular cohort. So you might get a little bit more volatility, but as you go through that, you'll get a better sense of it, looking at the data and deciding what it is that you want to focus on first. So there are a number of bubble charts in the survey. Those who've worked with me before, you've seen the bubble charts before, you know I love them. Basically, things in the upper two quadrants are your relative strengths, bottom two quadrants are your relative weaknesses. Over on the right-hand side are the things that have the most impact, that are the most strongly related overall satisfaction. And the ones over on the left-hand side are really more optimized, they don't have as much push on them for moving the score forward if you invest in lift those scores more. So these are the main categories of questions that we asked in the survey, just to give you a summary of it. So the things that were the most impactful, number 16, which is the overall regulatory environment, you can see it's right there in line, really it didn't erode the score or lift the score, but it is an opportunity to move the score. So as you move this score up, you'll have the most impact in terms of lifting your overall satisfaction and those outcome behaviors that come along with it. Number 18, which is agreement about doing business, number of statements that we'll come to in a minute as far as satisfaction in doing business with Troy. Number 11 is the overall cooperative and collaborative environment, again, a pretty solid score, also pretty highly leveraged. And then 13 is dealing with the overall local government, so what do they think of all of you and the kind of job that you're doing? A solid score. And then eight and seven both have to do with the current economy and the economic health. So we'll get into more detail in those in just a minute. So looking at the economic health overall, you can see the strength of overall economy was one of the highest scores there. The place that it was the lowest is the level of unemployment. That was the most concern, particularly as people are looking at, you know, trying to get staff in to get things covered that they need to get covered, and people may not be as interested in coming to work as they might hope. When we look at the impact of these particular scores, you can see 7D is the one that is the most impactful, it's the furthest over to the right, which is the strength of the overall economy. And then 7C, which is the lowest of those scores, which is the level of unemployment. Looking at the economic outlook going forward, again, strength of the local economy is very strong, and again, the employment levels are the things that are the biggest weakness in that. And again, you can see a very similar sort of pattern to what we saw with the last slide, that, you know, there is a fair amount of relationship, this is fairly well-loaded in terms of the amount of impact it has on you, and really it's similar sorts of areas that we saw with the other one. When we looked at employment levels and what they predict for the next year, as I mentioned, over 45% of your employers are expecting their employment levels to be growing. And if they're not growing, it's staying the same. Very, very few plan on shrinking their workforce or anticipate shrinking it. And most folks don't know, who say they don't know, still, you know, fewer than 10%. So a really strong situation from a growth of jobs perspective. So the big constraint you're going to have are the workers to fill those particular jobs. Looking at space needs, you can see overall folks say that they're going to be staying the same in terms of the kind of space that they're using currently, or they're going to be expanding their space. Looking at the overall business infrastructure, you know, a number of different elements. We have cell phone reception, which was your highest score. The availability of services to support business growth was your lowest score. And again, these are folks that are supplying the businesses, giving them what they need. And again, like most of the economy, we've got these constraints in terms of the labor force, as well as material supplies, to really do as well as we don't like. Looking at the impact, you know, overall business infrastructure, pretty high scores. This really isn't the thing that's driving their satisfaction with the city of Troy currently. So all these are things to keep an eye on, particularly 9A, which has the most, which is the availability of services to support business growth. For the most part, it's pretty optimized, or at least it's not something that they really see the city having a huge role in. We asked them about their business space and some impressions of what that looks like in terms of availability and affordability and quality. And you can see that the highest score is for the quality of working space for businesses, that was marked almost at 75. The availability of working space also marked very high. The lowest score, the affordability warehouse storage space, and the quality of warehouse storage space. Both are areas that are challenges for your businesses right now. And this is telling us that while they are concerned, while they're lower scores, these aren't huge drivers in terms of satisfaction, but some of them are starting to be. So you can see 10C, 10E, and 10D having a bit more impact, and those are 10C, which is the quality of working space, 10E, which is the availability of warehouse space, and 10D, which is the affordability of warehouse storage space. Questions regarding the cooperative, collaborative environment that businesses experience in the city of Troy. Overall, very positive. They can see the welcoming attitude toward businesses, very strong score. The area that had the weakest score were the opportunities to participate in the city's planning and development process. And so as you move forward, thinking about building those opportunities, developing the outreach so that people know those opportunities are there, is going to have some fruit for you. And when we look at this slide, looking at the relative impacts, we're starting to see more and more impact as far as those elements. 10C, which is the opportunities to participate in the city's planning, that was the lowest score and one of the more impactful ones in this particular set of questions. We asked the respondents which associations or other organizations are they members of currently? This is one of those charts where the words that come up most often are the ones that are the largest, the things that we saw the most going through them. Chamber of Commerce, CPA Business Associates, and the Better Business Bureau, both came up quite often. And you have the actual full text of this available as well, so you can see the listing of all of the different associations and such that folks are members of. We asked about emergency services. You can see, you know, the scores are above 90 across the line, so your staff are doing a really high-quality job. They're serving not only the residents, but businesses in the city, too. Looking at the impact, you can see they're really optimized at this point, so they're doing a great job, doing an even better job, really won't move the needle that much in terms of their overall satisfaction, so if they keep doing what they're doing, really they're being very well-received by the business community. Looking at local government management, we can see the highest score for being well-managed, so as far as efficiency and being organized and so on, beginning effectively with community, also marked pretty high. A little bit softer with spending dollars wisely. So this is often tied in with the communications and what kind of messages are you putting in as far as the background, the explanations, and what that decision-making process does. This can also be tied in with the opportunity for businesses to be involved in the decision-making process that we saw a couple of slides back. So this is one that you want to dig into a little bit more to try to figure out where that perception is coming from and what you can do to improve that particular perspective. When we look at the impact of overall local government, you can see this is fairly impactful, not huge, but pretty impactful, and 13C being the one that's largest, which are having leaders who are trustworthy, and 13D, which is spending dollars wisely. Looking at transportation, road pavement condition, so up about 60. Not a fantastic score, as we see with all communities, particularly in the Midwest, but a very solid score relative to other communities, and also one of the highest-scoring scores that you have in this particular section. Traffic congestion also scored pretty well. Public transportation was your lowest-scoring area, and then the accommodation for bicycle and foot traffic followed that. When we dive in, though, and look at the impact, we can see, you know, even though these are lower scores, most of these are not all that terribly, they're not as much of a driver for your business community as other questions are. 14A being the one that has the most impact, which is the road pavement condition. Next, looking at utility services, you can see that the highest-scoring area is the ease of paying city water and sewer bills. The lowest-scoring area is the affordability of the city water and sewer rates. And when we look at the impact, you can see, you know, they're kind of on the line. 15B being the most impactful, which is the adequacy of utility services to support your business. But again, you know, pretty optimized, pretty high scores. Looking at the regulatory environment, the ease of complying with regulations marked pretty high, a little bit of a softer score for the clarity of the city regulations affecting your business, and the value of city services for the fees and taxes that you pay. So I talked about this a little bit in the earlier slide, as far as people not really knowing which particular things affect them and how they go about addressing whatever they need to address from a regulatory environment. So baking that into your communication strategy can be helpful. Similarly, the value of city services for the fees and taxes that you pay, that's another kind of communications piece to bake into those key messages. So making sure that you're articulating that so that folks do know how Troy is different from other communities in the metro area. Looking at the bubble chart for the regulatory environment, you can see that all of these scores are very impactful. So this is certainly something that you want to spend some time looking at, figuring out how you can lift these scores between now and the next measurement period. We asked which regulatory issues negatively impact their business, and there weren't a huge number of responses, so we basically just plopped them here so you can see what the overall comments are. The main themes that we saw were permit processing, kind of concerns with the business, with the building department. Then there were a couple of comments regarding signs in this particular section. But again, these are just a couple of comments based on 146 respondents, gives you a little bit of a flavor of some things you could think about. But looking at the data is going to give you a surer guide in terms of what kind of things will give you the most bang for the buck. We had a number of questions asking them about their overall level of agreement about different dimensions of working with the city. So Troy regulations are fair, you can see that there's a high level of agreement with that question. Level of code enforcement is reasonable, again, you can see a pretty high level of agreement. Troy regulations encourage growth, you can see that that one was a little bit softer along with the signage regulation again. And as we saw with the regulatory side, these are pretty impactful. So these are things that you'll want to spend some time looking at a little bit more closely, brainstorming ways that you can ratchet those upward. What does Troy do well to attract and retain businesses? Another open-ended question. The things that came up, again, the largest things, you know, location, huge benefit for you. Roads, the fact that you do work hard on keeping the roads, maintaining the general cleanliness of the city, those things really help the place seem inviting, that you're being very intentional in terms of building a quality experience to do business, quality place to visit, quality place to live. And then police, again, very strong comments in a positive way about police and fire being responsive, you know, just working with folks and being open. We asked about how to attract and retain businesses. There were three main themes that came up. Signage, again, came up, so that's something that you'll want to spend a bit of... Signage again came up, so that's something that you'll want to spend a bit of time looking at a little bit more closely to see what kind of adjustments would make sense. Regulation, one of the specific things that came out was, you know, give us a checklist of what are the regulations that we need to pay attention to based on what kind of business we have, because they just don't know and there's a level of frustration with that. It's not that they think the regulations are unfair, they just don't know what they are. As well as the right people to contact to address whatever issues they need to address. And then roads, you know, people value that you continue to fix the roads and the sidewalks and the pathways, all of those, they can see that, they appreciate it. There is a little bit of orange barrel fatigue that sets in sometimes, you'll see that, but for the most part, people do appreciate that you're making those investments. We asked which programs and services are used the most. Police, utilities, and parks really are the things that came up most often in that word cloud. How can the city positively impact your business? Some of the things that came up, particularly from small businesses, is they would like to see a higher profile for small businesses, they have more of a voice, that there's some opportunities to do more collaboration, more advertising, joint marketing, getting involved, ways that they can build traffic in terms of bringing more people to their door, all of those kind of things they think would be fantastically helpful. Number two, taxes. Taxes always come up as something that people would like to see lower, so that's something to be aware of. But again, you also saw the value for taxes perception being a bit of a lower score, so spending more time also helping folks understand what it is that they're getting for their money and why it is that Troy really is differentiated from other communities in terms of what they get for the taxes that they pay. And then roads, again, just continuously improving the roads, making sure that congestion isn't there, that the quality is there, that generally things are maintained and clean. We had a number of questions regarding communication. So where do they get their news? Most of the respondents from the internet or from television stations. When we looked at their preference of how they would like to get information from the city, number one, far and away is email. Number two would be city website and then US mail. Looking at television station preferences, so in order, channel seven, channel four, channel two. Newspapers, Free Press is number one, followed by the Detroit News, and then the Troy Times. And then additional sources of news, you can see those, some of the national things, New York Times, Wall Street Journal, Apple News are the ones that came up most often. All right, so that was the whirlwind summary of the results. Now I'll pause and answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Will.
You're welcome.
I was gonna say, can we see him again? That helps. Questions from council? Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Will, again for another really valuable survey, really, really incredible info, especially to see what's the most important for businesses versus what's, you know, rated positively or negatively. Did any of the comments mention, like, what specifically about the sign regulations did they find troubling? And then also, what kind of small business support from a local government were they, did they like more? I know you mentioned like shout-outs for small business and things like that, but was there any more elaboration on that?
I would have to go back and check. It doesn't immediately jump to mind as far as specific examples. Some of the things that we've seen in other business surveys, as far as the marketing and support, there is often a lot of interest in sharing marketing information or if there's events, maybe creating additional events so that there's some additional foot traffic. If there's some marketing information that you can help share or disseminate, so the library undoubtedly has a lot of fantastic information that's great for a small business and they don't notice there. And so the city can be one more channel to get some of that fantastic information out. So demographics now is one that immediately jumps to mind, that would probably be very useful for a lot of your small businesses. So those are some of the pieces that immediately jump out. As far as the sign regulation, there is always a tension between signs that are very large and visible and also signs that kind of, you know, balance the aesthetics of the community. So finding that fine point is something that you just have to have conversations to figure out, what is the exact what people want? Do they want flashing neon signs all over the place? Or is it that they just need something a little bit larger to make sure that they're more visible from the road as people are passing by? And again, I don't know specific comments that I could point to, but those are typically the kinds of things that we see in both of those areas.
Thank you. It may be worth the city to maybe do focus groups with some of those businesses to kind of dig in further on that to see where we can go.
It sounds like there's an appetite for some workshops to do.
Yes, great.
Thanks, Tim. Additional questions for Will, or I guess we could move to comments to Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. Will, great to see you again. Always great data to dive into. It's always a pleasure. I have a question, just something I'm trying to wrap my head around. I saw the lower score around public transportation, and we do know we have a wider regional transit issue in our Troy County area. But what was interesting is, you know, it scored lower, so we recognize there's challenges. But in terms of it being a real driver to satisfaction, it actually ranked low, which was surprising because some of what I've heard is, in the hospitality sector, others have said that is a challenge. In large, some of the large hospitality, the hotels, they rely upon staff who need that public transportation. It is essential. And so wondering, but the only way I can answer why that score might not be a higher driver to satisfaction is because most of the people answered were small businesses, between 1 to 40. So is that how you would answer that? Kind of, it's a little bit of a paradox to me, so just trying to resolve that.
It is, so, yeah, so looking at the size of the business and also at the industry that they're in. So those are the two pieces that I paid the most attention to. And you'll have the cross tabs, if you haven't looked at them already, that really gives you the micro breakdown of the scores in each of those areas. But the bulk of your respondents were those small businesses, and so if the public transportation isn't a huge factor for them, particularly if it's non-op kind of thing, and, you know, they've got their parking spot to just drive in, then that would certainly dilute the amount of the strength of the correlation for the population overall, because these are summary numbers that are just given to the overall numbers. So certainly the size of the operation is probably a big piece to look at when you're diving into the cross tabs to see, you know, what are the ones that were the most, that rated at the lowest? And then number two, other particular industries that are disproportionately affected, as you mentioned, hospitality and somebody else that have a large number of staff and take a little look from on the top.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Additional questions for Will? Any comments further or anything? I did have a quick question, but it's more for city management. Will, first of all, thank you. I do appreciate, one, fixing your sound. That was great. It was good. Made it a little better. But I do appreciate the kind of, you called it a whirlwind. It was a quick deep dive in that gave us some tidbits and further stuff to look at, of course. But my question for city management is, and I'm not sure exactly how we'd go about doing this, but it seems to me that there's a perception among at least the businesses that participated that our regulations are either not clear or something. And frankly, I've never actually really heard that before when I'm out in the community talking with new businesses or whatever I'm doing with the businesses. So I'm just wondering if there's a way we can further look into that along this line with the sign ordinance, I mean, where we can improve. I think probably with the sign, it's, they want bigger signs for more advertising, would be my guess. But the regulations concern me a little bit because I certainly don't want that to be our reputation, and I don't think it is. So I'm a little surprised by this, but I don't know if that's something you could dive into a little deeper for us.
Yeah, I think when Mark Adams, Mark is in the audience, when he does retention visits, he can inquire about these topics.
It's a good time to mention Mark Adams again, who, the survey showed they don't know enough about our economic development manager, and so we do have Mark Adams who replaced Glenn Lapin, of course. So we do have that role, but that's great, Mark. Thank you.
We're just, we've started to try to do a little bit.
Yeah, better come to the mic, Mark.
We're in the process of trying to establish more of a calling program on businesses right now, so hopefully that type of visibility would help. And also partnering a little stronger with Oakland County and the state of Michigan because they call on certain businesses in certain sectors in the Troy area. And I've been participating in some Zoom calls with local businesses here, but unfortunately the sample size was small and a lot of the businesses that we've been calling on has probably been a little bit above the 49 number. And the reason why you want to call on those types of businesses, it's been proven that the impact of the larger businesses create more jobs, create more opportunities. But no job, all jobs are important. So whether it's one job or 49, I recognize that. And we all here in the city of Troy, and I know at the county try to give the same types of services no matter who you are. So hopefully we'll see some improvement in the coming months.
Thank you, Mark. Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick question about when new businesses come to the city, do we have, does the city have a process of kind of maybe meeting with them or providing them with information or a point of contact that they know of? Or do we have a process in place?
Cindy has a packet that she has worked with, and I think with Glenn before I got here, where you do give them some sheets on what type of services that the city can provide. So I think we do have like a welcoming package, if that's what you were talking about. We do have that that talks about the number of businesses, the different services, our community center where you can get assistance for, you know, writing a business plan and marketing. A lot of that is done through the county business board because, you know, we leverage our services with the county and with the state and with the different chambers of commerce here to sort of give a holistic point of view for services for businesses because, you know, we're here in Troy, but really we're a region and a state, and, you know, we look beyond our borders in order to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
My last comment on this, I talk a lot about our businesses, but just to Will, Will, as a clarification, not a clarification, but this is a benchmarking survey and designed to be a benchmarking survey, which like our community resident survey was as well. So the idea is these are our initial benchmarks. I'd be curious to see how things change the next time we do it. Hopefully, as people get back to the offices or whatever that is, we can do a, we'll have a bigger sample size, I would hope, I would think. I mean, I know it's been tough and a lot of people still aren't dealing with their mail on a regular basis, as crazy as that sounds in a business, but that's my understanding. So looking forward to continuing to see this process evolve and do thank you, Will, and all the work at Cobalt, and I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
It's my pleasure. Fantastic evening.
Thank you, you too. That concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item from the consent agenda they'd like to poll for further discussion this evening? Councilmember Hoderek.
Do we have to poll J's? No, never mind. Thank you.
Never mind. Councilmember Abraham.
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilmember Abraham, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Councilmember Hamilton for discussion?
Yep. Just wanted to mention that J8 is a cost participation agreement for road work on Maple Road from Coolidge Highway to Rochester Road, so look for that construction this year. And I thank the city again for utilizing the tri-party funding with the county, and it saves us a lot of money, so it's great to see it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Erickson-Gault?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, motion carries. If you're here for a consent agenda item this evening, all have been approved. Next up are memorandums and future council agenda items. I have two to announce this evening. K1, announcement of public hearings, A, for June 13th, 2022, announcement of public hearing, preliminary site plan review, SPJPLN 2021-0023, proposed Eckford Oaks One Family Residential Cluster, north side of Eckford, west of Rochester, PIN 88-20-15-251-026, and 88-20-15-251-017. Section 15, currently zoned R1B One Family Residential District. And K1B for June 13th, 2022, is announcement of a public hearing, preliminary site plan review, SPJPLN 2021-0028, proposed Golden Villas One Family Residential Cluster, south side of Square Lake, west of Dequender, PIN 88-20-12-200-021, and 88-20-12-200-035. Section 12, currently zoned R1C One Family Residential District. That concludes memorandums and future council agenda items. Next up is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. We have three people signed up this evening. First up will be Nora Salyer. And as same rules as before, you have three minutes. When the light turns yellow, you have one minute left. At red, that means you're three minutes up. And one other point, just for clarification, this is an opportunity for you to speak to us, this is not a back and forth conversation, so don't be surprised if we don't say anything back to you. And if you ask any questions, we won't answer directly at the time. Just know that. All right, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Nora Salyer, and I'm an eighth grade student at Derby Middle School. I am speaking to you today about a problem or concern that I see in our community. The concern that I have is that there are not enough wheelchair accessible entrances going into stores, restaurants, or businesses. In the United States, over 26% of our population is in need of wheelchairs. They use wheelchairs to get around from place to place. Troy, Michigan itself is a very old city. It was founded in 1827, but it wasn't until 1990 that business, some businesses incorporated wheelchair ramps and curb cuts into their entryways. Throughout the town, I have noticed that many stores and restaurants don't have a wheelchair accessible ramp. The only thing that I see that is remotely close enough is a curb cut in the sidewalk for wheelchairs and senior citizens with walkers or canes, but those individuals are not limited. And when I look at those curb cuts, they aren't in the nicest condition. The concrete has many bumps and loose debris on it and rocks and all that. Many senior citizens can be very unbalanced when walking and that they could fall over, tripping over the stuff, especially if they have a cane. My point is that there needs to be more wheelchair accessible ramps and better managed curb cuts throughout our city. I would also like if we could redo the curb cuts to make them nicer and safer for our friends in the wheelchairs or our senior citizens with walkers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Salyer. Appreciate that. Next up, we have Tony Kappas.
Good evening, council. First off, I'd like to say my name is Tony Kappas. I live at 501 Eckford. And first off, I'd like to just say thank you very much for your time that you spend helping out the city of Troy. It's dedication like that that people need to see on a daily basis to continue on. My comments actually are for something that was on the, that was on, that I didn't realize, which is your items on K1 per public hearing. So I'll start out with it. I'm calling on the city council and request and demand change to sitting planning ordinances. As the ordinances stand, private development firms can purchase land, overdevelop it, and sell the land to the highest bidder. They are not required to give any sort of consideration to existing neighborhoods, environment, or wildlife. They have found and exploited loophole to deny the Troy citizens the right to voice their concerns and have input to the process. They don't have, they're not required to have any traffic studies, they don't require wildlife impact studies, they don't require outside contractors to do ecological studies. Instead, they take these development companies at their word with no checks and balances as to the studies or actual plausibility. I know that at some point, city council cared because in 2017, there was a subcommittee for green space that was created. I don't know what happened with that, but I'll tell you what, our green space is dwindling at an alarming rate. Our current planning ordinances are based only in greed and do not have, allow any current citizens any power to call it out. I have received pushback from the city engineering department because apparently increasing the number of homes on a street by 75 the number of homes on a street by seventy-five percent was not enough for the city's eyes to warrant a traffic study, even if the s- the street in question already had an issue. And I apologize, I- I- I had to do this on my phone, my- my printer wasn't working today. Um, with speed in the general area, especially near a school. Uh, so since the development, development employees have chosen the path of most destruction and the city employees have chosen the path of the least resistance, uh, I spoke to the city planning department as well as the attorney's office, and they've both indicated that due to our current ordinances, it's out of their hands, their hands are tied. Even with virtually all of the current residents in an existing subdivision opposing a development due to its non-conforming nature, the only way, uh, to change our way forward in Troy was to come in front of you, the city council. So therefore, I'm calling my elected officials to step in because what's wrong is wrong.
Mr. Kappas? That's your three minutes, or can you finish up in thirty seconds?
Probably real close.
Good? All right, thirty-five seconds, go ahead.
In two thousand twenty, Plainfield Charter Township enacted a, uh, a Michigan zoning-enabling con- yeah, act, which provided that by zoning ordinances, regulations, lands developed to ensure that the use of the land is situated in appropriate location and relationship consistent with existing homes to promote public safety and health. What do the citizens of Troy have to do to get a memorandum, uh, on, created, uh, to, to prevent from nesting doll situations with subdivisions in Troy? Should the two subdivisions that are currently being proposed on my street go through, it'll have two subdivisions within one subdivision created. That's just wrong. So I'm asking you as my counsel, please do something about it. If you can put a memorandum together and, and, uh, stop building until this is, this can be looked at and figured out a way to, to get people like myself. I had, uh, everybody on my street signed a petition against it. Anyways, I know my time is up. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Uh, next up is Aaron Deluski.
Uh, I'm Aaron Deluski. I'm a citizen of Troy. Nora, uh, you mentioned, isn't it cool that we can interface with the city like this? Um, yeah, she brings up wheelchair, caught my attention, wheelchair ramps. Um, I was working with the city, talking with the, interfacing with the city. And the city, um, while that was, while I was interfacing with the city, we built, um, or the city had developed, uh, wheelchair ramps all along the Liver North Corridor. And, um, that was with the Troy Trails Committee. Uh, maybe you should look into it. The, um, I wanted to, I wanted to introduce myself and, uh, say that I'm a, I'm going to Indiana to, to see some motorcar racing. I want to place my dad's ashes at the Speedway there, because that's what he liked doing. So I'm biking there. Um, I bike long distance, I see a lot of things and whatever. And somebody was mentioning gun violence, they dress in orange. I'm wearing yellow, um, privy to things called road violence. Uh, it's, I mentioned something about, uh, dangerous by design last, last time I spoke here. And, um, um, road violence, I think, is kind of like gun violence in a sort of way, where it's, it's kind of like, almost by, like, an infrastructure in itself where it's being exploited. Um, so I kind of share that sentiment with the, people wearing orange. Uh, anyway, uh, I noticed, I, I came here, the reason I came here is because on sixteen, fifteen mile road, I saw a bunch of people riding their bikes, walking, whatever, whatever they were doing, there were pedestrians on the sidewalk, riding, whatever, even electric bikes. I don't think electric bikes should be on the sidewalk, I think they should be where motor vehicles are, put that in your policy book. Um, anyway, uh, I see a lot of people, you know, out on the, out on the, uh, the landscape here, and, uh, uh, there's not good infrastructure for it. It's dangerous. I think it's by design, just, you know, sort of keep the reputation of people, you know, maybe lower-income individuals that just ride bicycles from riding in people's backyards around here. There's a park around here, Redwood Park, I was following routes, bike routes, and the bike route, the signage pointed me into the park, and the park had no outlet, so I wasted my time there. Redwood Park, it's by Stevenson Highway and fourteen. Anyway, um, one more thing, one more thing, is, uh, that you are overall business infrastructure, uh, bicycling, people that ride bikes are known to spend more at local small businesses. So if you're looking for infrastructure that improves small businesses, maybe you could kind of look into that. All right, my time's done. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Aaron. Safe travels to Indiana. That concludes those who have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Now's an opportunity for city council and city administration to respond and reply. Um, I, I'm wondering if city management could speak just a little bit about our ADA compliance and how that works in the city, just for Ms. Salier, just a little bit. I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Sure, I can.
Each of you are looking at each other, which is always a good sign, but I-
I can talk a little bit about that. So, so, Kyle, probably was in the nineteen eighties, the federal government adopted the Americans with Disabilities Act, commonly known as ADA. And those standards have been built into the Michigan Building Code, so, um, and also into the design of roads and sidewalks. And so whenever the, whenever they're improved, we have to bring them up to standards, and so it's a slow process, but the theory is over time, everything will be brought up to current standards. And, um, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen it, those orange plates in par- in, in sidewalks, those are called truncated discs, and those are all required by the, the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, I mean, we could talk a little bit more, maybe offline, about this, but over time, we spend a lot, a lot of time and money, especially in road projects, um, having ADA compliance. It may not seem like it, but we are working at it every single day.
Laura, did you have anything to add? I think you covered it pretty well.
Obviously, it's a priority for us, and, and we do need to make sure that there is compliance with the ADA. Um, and, you know, again, we, we recognize that there's a, a segment of our population, um, but we are also prohibited from, uh, having those regulations. That's, that's something that is not, um, actually a city of Troy requirements, but they are beyond the city of Troy.
Right. I think one of the difficult things is, a lot of our city was built out before the ADA came into effect. And when they, like City Manager Miller said, when something gets improved, he said, or when someone basically is remodeling or doing new things, just like the city, when the city is required to update an intersection, we have to make sure everything's ADA compliant, those businesses do too. I wish we could say, hey, everybody, get up on board, get on board and get it all ready and compliant for everybody, but it's tough for, we don't have the powers to do that, obviously. But it is something, I know our city attorney and city management, the building department, they're very focused on making sure there is proper enforcement. And when we do have new development or remodeling of businesses of any kind, it's a priority to make sure that's taken care of. But you're very poised, and I appreciate you coming forward and bringing this issue to us. It's always good to keep it top of mind for all of us, and, um, I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything here, but, nope. Let's go with Counselmember Abraham.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Salier, I, I wish, when I was an eighth grader, I could speak as well as you do. In fact, there are some days now, at the age of forty-six, I wish I could have speak as well as you do. But even greater than your poise is your heart. I can't think of that many eighth graders that would notice that level of detail and then feel so compelled that you wrote council, you wrote city management, you came to council and spoke in front of a bunch of strangers who are sitting up at a podium, and you're, you're, you're talking at the podium, and we're sitting up here at the dais. I'm so proud of you, and I, I think your, your parents are too. The one other thing I'd like to, to add is clearly you have a big heart and your eyes are open to some of the challenges that we see. If you see something like an unsafe condition, you mentioned before, some of the curb cuts aren't in great shape, maybe it's a safety issue, someone in a walker might stumble on it, please bring that to the city's attention. Um, I think you, you're now aware of the portal, um, that, that you can lodge, um, concerns, and that's something that inspectors would, you know, go out and look at and see if there's a, a compliance issue or if it's, it's something that's still within the right condition parameters, okay? So thank you for coming in tonight. I'm, I'm beaming underneath my mask, you can't see it, you could probably tell by my voice, but you're, you're, I look forward to what you're going to be doing in ten and twenty years from now.
Thanks, Counselmember Abraham. Counselmember Hoderek?
Ms. Salier, thank you for coming in. And as, as Councilwoman Abraham said, you know, we love your heart, and we love that you're being that observant, that's what makes cities strong. Um, my, my neighborhood, um, not too many years ago, had the curb cut issues that you're talking about. And when the, when the sidewalks and the curb cuts were refreshed, they are now all ADA compliant. And you're welcome to reach out to me if you want to come see what that looks like in a neighborhood that was put in before these regulations were in place. And then as, as the repairs have come along, um, they have, that has been updated, and you can see what that looks like. It's carefully planned into the city budgets over a long period of time, and, uh, resources and dollars, we take it, you know, one neighborhood, one area at a time, but it's always, it's always part of it. Another thing to mention is, um, and at the top of my head, I'm not remembering the details, this might be maybe City Manager Miller or, uh, DPW Director Bobyn Seep, you know, the, when we're working on our parks, what we're trying to bring to those parks in terms of, um, inclusive play equipment and whatnot is absolutely a priority, and we recently approved, um, dollars to that effect. So, uh, know that we share your heart and, um, and appreciate you coming forward to learn more and to continue to give your input on what you see. It's very valuable to making a city very strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Hoderek. Counselmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Just really quick, Mayor, um, I want to respond to Aaron's comment, but start with Ms. Salier, and again, thank you for, for being here. You remind me of the power of youth and how much we really benefit when youth are part of our decision-making. So thank you very much. And I'm, I'm in the southwest of Troy, it sounds like you might be as well, so maybe we're in the, the same neighborhood, we'll have to talk more. Um, to refer to Mr. Deluski's, um, Aaron's comment, I was at, um, I was thinking about biking infrastructure, and we saw in the business survey how, um, biking, walkability, some of that, um, came out as, in terms of, you know, business, business satisfaction, their views on those things. I was at eight-eight Big Beaver with my son, we were doing Shake Shack last week while my husband was out of town, and a couple bikers came by to Shake Shack and were looking for a bike rack. And I was like, good question, I'm on city council, I should know where to find a bike rack. So I was looking around eight-eight Big Beaver and couldn't find one, and they had these beautiful, they were beautiful bikes, so they wanted a bike rack. Um, and they just kind of left them against the wall at the end of the day. I know that's a private development, um, so that's not something the city would necessarily, and maybe we wouldn't invest in. And I guess the question is, do we ever partner, um, with something like the developers of eight-eight Big Beaver to think about putting bike racks in? And then secondly, as we think about the DDA redoing, um, the land, thinking about Big Beaver, I believe we talked about potentially bike racks, or did we not? Bike racks along Big Beaver, and that's something I mentioned to them, they're coming, they will be coming at some point. So just wanted to ask more about bike racks throughout the city and, um, what the, the city's vision is on that.
Actually, the zoning ordinance requires bike racks. I'm surprised there's not one at eight-eight Big Beaver.
Maybe it's hiding.
Yeah, maybe it's hiding.
I think there is, it's just not at Shake Shack. It's probably-
By the apartments.
Over around, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kappas, we didn't, didn't forget about you either, obviously, um, I'll start briefly on that. I just announced those public hearings tonight, um, for the project relating to you, and our next meeting, we'll actually have the public hearing on those developments. Um, I will look into a little bit what you were talking about. Obviously, we are in a place now where any changes we were to make to a zoning ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't affect the projects already proposed, um, for Eckford and such. So, but it's always good to be looking at planning and what's, how we're evolving and what we can do to better our city. Um, and I pr- I expect that you'll probably be back at the next meeting. I could count on it, I think, uh, but I do appreciate you coming forward and, uh, part of our process, and I don't know if you're aware, is that, you know, generally, these projects, when they go through our planning commission, you know, we haven't seen all of the details yet, those come to us a little bit later, we have access to them, but our, my pro- my personal process, I should say, is that I don't do a full review of everything until that meeting's coming. So I'm not well-versed on that Eckford project right now, so I wouldn't feel too comfortable speaking too much more about it tonight. Counselmember Hoderek?
What Mayor Baker just said specifically regarding this project, I, I'm in the same position, because I need to now research it and understand it and come as prepared as possible for the public hearing. And, and, you know, we all commit to doing that, when, when that comes before us. But, and generally speaking, you know, you, you referenced the green space subcommittee that we had. Um, I, I don't know if you're aware that following and even preceding that, this, these kinds of discussions have been going on at the council table and the planning commission level for, for some time. Um, we, we did, you know, our developers have private property rights, that we work with our ordinances and our master plan to ensure it's compatible with our neighborhoods and the surroundings as possible. And one of the things residents have given us input on is that they want us to reevaluate that. We are currently going through a master plan review process, which happens by law, by state law, every five years. Um, the nodes have been a huge discussion point for residents throughout the city. There is a subcommittee of the planning commission, um, looking at the nodes. And then we're looking at the master, master plan overall and how we ensure the compatibility. I will also say that not every development that comes before city council has been given a nod, and where we can use the ordinance to justify why it needs to be denied, we have done that. So our ordinance, we do, we do have compatibility, how it relates to the neighborhood, um, all those things that we can look at with our ordinance, which, um, in my experience, over my years here on council, there's been a great commitment to do that, both at the planning commission and council level. One of the ordinances that was developed, because people were so concerned about the loss of green space and trees, um, being removed, we do have a tree ordinance, and we do have what's called a cluster development ordinance, which is designed to, um, my, my words, these aren't legal development terms, but bake in greater green space and places of division between neighborhoods and another development. And we've really tried to use that to meet some of the needs that you were bringing to the microphone tonight, and these are in general terms that we brought. So there's things that developers can do by right that, on properties, and then, but they can also, we can try to offer, and, and it's their choice, to look at a cluster ordinance to see if there's more protection of green space that can be brought in. We work this, you know, it's, um, you're not the first resident to, to talk to us about these concerns. Um, this has been going on over several, for several years now, where we're trying to finesse it. And I guess I just, I wanted to give you that background, I'm happy to talk to you more in general terms about that offline, if you'd like. But just for the audience that's watching and who may be catching up with this for the first time, your concerns aren't, um, aren't, your concern are known in our minds, baked into the processes that we're looking at, and as this master plan review comes up in the next couple of months, um, I think in the fall timeframe, is that correct, City Manager Miller? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
That's where we're going to be looking to, to, to make, to finesse it, and, and try to get it, um, to meet our needs of our current residents, as well as what the law would require us to meet with our developers. I hope that helps a little bit, a little background.
Thank you, Counselmember Hoderek. Any other reply or response to public comment? All right. Next up are council referrals. Uh, first up is a vote on resolution to waive the rules of procedure for the city council, rule number eight, proclamations and congratulatory certificates. Uh, resolve that Troy city council, I'll move, uh, resolve that Troy city council hereby waives the rules of procedure for the city council, rule number seven- Rule number seven, proclamations and congratulatory certificates to approve and present a resolution to proclaim June 2022 as gun violence awareness month in the city of Troy on May 23, 2022.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve the vote on resolution to waive the rules. Let's just write it into the record. Any discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion carries. N1 is a council referral from me. And it's a resolution to proclaim June 2022, June 2022 as gun violence awareness month in the city of Troy. We heard a little bit about earlier from public comment. I'm going to read this into the record, and we can talk about it a little bit. I think that's appropriate. My motion is to, this suggested resolution is as follows. Whereas public safety and protecting the residents, businesses, and visitors of the city of Troy remains the number one strategic priority of the mayor and Troy City Council. And whereas ensuring public safety while protecting free speech and other basic constitutional rights is among the mayor and Troy City Council's primary responsibilities. And whereas gun violence, particularly within our nation's schools and in places of worship, is unacceptable and of constant and growing concern. And whereas local elected officials and local law enforcement officers know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are uniquely positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas we continue to support all law enforcement officials in their efforts to halt all acts of violence, including gun violence. And whereas, as a community, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our residents and community safe. And whereas, it is important to speak out against all acts of hate and intolerance, respect others' points of view, and value and honor human life. And whereas, as a community, we must continue to be vigilant about intolerance and violent behavior and encourage others to follow the mantra, "If you see something, say something." Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and Troy City Council declare June 2022 to be gun violence awareness month in the city of Troy and encourage all citizens to support our community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Be it further resolved that we encourage responsible gun ownership and pledge to do all we can to reduce gun violence, encourage responsible gun ownership, and to help keep our residents and community safe. My question, as I just read that into the record, was that a motion? Procedurally, that was a motion to approve that proclamation, right? Okay. Well, it's moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, to approve that N1 council referral, as written into the record, to proclaim June 2022 as gun violence awareness month in the city of Troy. Now's an opportunity for discussion. Obviously, I'm going to start here as it was my referral. We're in an interesting place in the city of Troy procedurally, before I talk to the meat of this, where we have really restricted our use of proclamations at this point until we have a better understanding of how we're doing that process moving forward. We found ourselves having four or five often proclamations each council meeting, recognizing wonderful causes and awareness of different things throughout our city and country. And we realized that there was an opportunity for us to maybe streamline that process. And we're still in the middle of that process, as evidenced by the report that's coming up a little bit later. That said, I recognize, certainly all of council recognize, the importance of gun violence awareness, not just in the city of Troy, but throughout the region and country, of course. We are in an unprecedented time of gun violence. And here we are experiencing things, you know, in Oxford, in our own backyard. Was it last week and the weekend before, there were gun violence issues, it seems like, throughout the entire country. And I believe it's important to have this awareness brought forward. I heard the request for amendments, and I understand where Ms. Paulus is coming from. And I, clearly, I'm wearing an orange tie this evening, and I know today's not even the day or the month yet, but I did want to show some support here. I am comfortable at this point leaving the referral as is, but certainly I'm open to other council members having discussion about the issue. Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to express my appreciation for you bringing forth this referral. I spoke to some proponents of this proclamation, which is, it's an effort put forward by a group called Moms Demand Action. They are, just as the name suggests, moms who have had enough of gun violence and want to see some action on it. And the June 3 date has some very important significance for the reasons that were mentioned during public comment. And I think that this proposal is overall fine, except that I really feel like we need to acknowledge the importance of that day and the importance of solidarity amongst all people, wearing orange on that day to signify that we are going to do something, that we're going to take action, either individually or collectively, to try to reduce gun violence in our country. So, I would like to see that added in in the result portion, something in there about encouraging our residents to wear orange on June 3. I don't have exact language in front of me, but perhaps just, we could just add it into the one paragraph where we declare gun violence awareness month. We encourage our citizens to support the efforts. And we could add in, encourage them to wear orange on June 3 to signify their intent to take action to reduce gun violence, something to that effect. Not married to that language, but I would like to see that added back in.
I support that, and I just need to figure out what the language is.
Yeah.
That's why I punted to you. So, I have a couple of options. I thought we could even add a, it's a little clunky to add it into the first resolved because it turns into three ands, right? I mean, I thought maybe we could do a, be it further resolved after that, in between those two bottom paragraphs, be it further resolved, the mayor and Troy City Council encourage all residents of the city of Troy to wear orange on June 3, 2022 for National Gun Violence Awareness Day or something like that, to that effect? Does that work? Maybe Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga has some options.
Just to jump in, and so I do like that because I do think that's important. And I recognize, I saw the original version, so I did realize it was a rewrite. As I shared, Mayor, I do like that we've sought to make it choice. I do believe in making our proclamation to fit our city and our community. And I think that that was the spirit of what you're doing, and that's a good spirit. But I think there are some things about a wider movement that we want to connect it to. So, I do support Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt's idea of adding that in. And just the other addition, which I raised my hands, I thought maybe we can add it in in that spot, is I do believe it's important to remember survivors and victims. And I say that because the difficult past week that we saw in my workplace, we work in cities across the country, we work in Buffalo, we held some space, we held a moment of silence, and we held space. And the first thing that we did after that moment of silence, we read every single name of every single victim in that Buffalo supermarket. It always begins with the victims. And we have to remember, there's also many, sadly, many, many, many survivors as well out there. And so, I just, for me, I do feel like that's also important in this process. And if there's a way maybe to wear orange to commemorate something, of course, to honor the day, but also to remember, honor the victims and survivors of gun violence, I would love to see that added in in some way.
Well, procedurally, someone needs to make a motion to amend the resolution that's currently on the table with precise language, or at least language that City Clerk Dixon is comfortable enough wordsmithing. And I'm sure there'll be support for it. I don't think that's the issue, but it's up to us to provide that specific language in less general terms or more specific terms, right, Clerk Dixon?
That would be appreciated.
Yeah, right.
I'm thinking.
I'm thinking too, which is the difficulty in doing these things from the table.
You got it?
I don't have it, Ellen. That's the thing, I'm trying to... I wish I would have known it a little earlier, for what it's worth.
How about?
Councilmember Hoderick, go ahead.
Be it further resolved, as you suggested, Mayor. After the noun, therefore be it resolved, adding in a, be it further resolved that the mayor and Troy City Council... Can't read my own writing. The mayor encourage participation in wear, in wear orange on June 3, 2022 for National Gun Violence, is it Awareness Day or just Day? Awareness Day. I can't read my own writing. And to remember and acknowledge victims and survivors of gun violence who continue to bear the burden of this challenge in our society each and every day. And then it would flow into the final, be it further resolved.
I can support that.
I forgot to say, I move, I move.
So, moved by Councilmember Hoderick, supported by the chair, that we amend the current resolution proclamation, N1, to include the language as just written into the record. Any discussion? All right, the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
The amendment motion carries now. There, that motion continues to be on the table for the amended language, correct? Or do I need to move it again? I'm sorry.
So, correct. The original motion's been amended now, so you have to approve it with the amendment in it, right?
Correct. All right. So, we've got that amended motion on the table. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Hoderick?
You know, this subject, when you came up to talk about years ago, when you first brought this, and I think about kind of emotionally where the nation and the community was when we talked this subject, it reminds me of years ago when texting and driving was a topic of discussion in the city of Troy. And at first, there was a bruhaha about why do we need to acknowledge this? Why do we even need to talk about it? And sadly, over time, we all learned exactly why we have to talk about that and the dangers of texting and driving. It occurs to me that I can remember when this was first brought, what seems like a no-brainer, maybe as moms, to talk about. There were, there's tensions about it. Now, here we are, some years later, and sadly, the discussion is more obvious and more of a no-brainer, as collectively, people across the political spectrum, gun owners, non-gun owners, there's just a recognition that we need to understand how to own firearms safely as a society and to be having that dialogue. So, Wear Orange Day, I love Wear Orange Day. I love and think it's a miracle that we're talking about a whole month now of saying, "Let's look at this." In a community that values and prioritizes public safety, when we're in training with our public safety professionals, where they talk about, yes, they're training for the reaction, but boy, they'd really rather have it prevented from the get-go. But they never have to be called to such a thing, whether it's an accidental shooting in a home, or because a gun was left in the backseat of a car and a child finds it, or heaven forbid, an active shooter. The whole idea is that we should be proactive as community members in how we caretake one another, how we own firearms, how we keep one another safe, even to the point of how we treat one another in kindness. People are on an edge, understandably. We've been through a lot. Our law enforcement, our police department, our police officers are dealing with that every day. So, I appreciate that you came here years ago, first brought this discussion here, and that we've continued to evolve that discussion. And hopefully, as we have this more holistically, and we can take political division out of it and just have the practical discussion about, you have a firearm, own it, own it safely. We have a, it's such a responsibility. I just want to acknowledge how far we've come in the discussion. And I hate that we have to still have it, but since we do, I'm glad we're in a place where we can have it constructively more and more and broader and broader throughout our region that is happening. And that is a very good thing in my mind. So, thank you. Thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderick. Councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that a few years ago, I was actually sitting where you guys were sitting. And I remember when this proclamation came about. And I stood up at the podium and stated, you know, the American Medical Association has called gun violence a serious threat to public health. And, you know, in those years, it hasn't improved, unfortunately. It continues to remain a serious issue in our society and our community, and the city of Troy is not immune to it. So, you know, I'm very happy and proud that all of us stand together and do support and continue to support and recognize the seriousness of this issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Strangely enough, I feel that you sitting out there in a better position, a way to make more noise about this issue and to continue to be advocates, we're in a different role up here at this table. And I'm glad we have this proclamation to put out there. And I hope that you can use it as a tool for your advocacy. And I know that you will. I'm familiar. And, you know, I've spoken with actually all of you about this issue at some point over the past several years. So, I appreciate you coming tonight. I know it was also kind of short notice, and I appreciate that you did that. I'm thankful that we're able to have this discussion at the table and do what we could to make some amendments, even though it was a little bit awkward, I think. It sounds silly, but we don't generally like to make these amendments from the table and this kind of stuff. But I understand where those requests were coming from, and I can appreciate that. Just to Councilman or Councilwoman Hoderick's point, you know, you kind of wish you didn't have to do these anymore because it was getting, it's all, I don't have to tell you, right? But we'll definitely keep doing what we can from up here. And I ask that you continue to do what you're doing from out there because I sometimes do believe that has a larger impact. So, thank you. That concludes council referrals this evening.
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Oh, we don't need to. I guess we need to vote on it.
Details.
Details, yeah. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Erickson-Galt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes council referrals this evening. Next up are reports. Does anyone have any comments on any of the reports this evening? There were several. I, I think we need to talk a little bit about proclamations and congratulatory certificates. I don't know if anyone has any comments on any reports other than that first. That would be, let's do that. And then otherwise, we can talk about O2D. I don't see anybody jumping up with anything. Always good reports. I don't see anybody jumping up with anything. Always good reports. Appreciate the reports. There's always important information in there. Timely is O2D, which is the report on proclamations and congratulatory certificates. And there is a late submittal of some dates here. We have... We had a study session back in February, I believe, to talk about this. And I led a little bit with the concerns we were having about all of these proclamations at the start of the council referral section. I think it's important for council to make some... Decisions is too strong of a word, but maybe provide some additional guidance to city management on where we want to go from here, so that we don't find ourselves doing council referrals for important proclamations and then amending them from the table. That's not the preferred method to do these. And yet, we know that based on our study session, there was consensus that we didn't want to do that necessarily. And two, we think we should get to a point where we can approve several of these proclamations to bring awareness or celebrate certain aspects of... That are on a... Have a Troy focus, but also a broader focus, and have those become part of the record without a formal presentation, and still allow for obviously the presentations of service commendations, interesting or exciting things that have happened in our community directly to residents and businesses. So I guess I want to ask first from city management, if you've had an opportunity to think of any specific asks you have of us this evening, based on this report, or if something that you could narrow a question for us or something to give some specific feedback on. And if the answer is no to that, then I'd ask council to think about a little bit how you think we should proceed, and if we could give some guidance to city management. We appreciate it.
I'll start off, Mayor. I think the first thing that we would like from council is to kind of give the nod that we're moving in the right direction. We have identified a series by month, you know, some months up to almost 10 different causes, you know, that we can formalize these and adopt them once a year, and then they'll be approved. And also, secondly, the idea, you know, that we have these potential guidelines or those moving in the right direction. And then ultimately, though, the idea of the presidential proclamations, do you like that? You know, that we can concur with what the president approves. Bob, I know you've worked on this. Do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Sure. I looked at presidential proclamations as a way of kind of vetting requests that come in. In 2021, the President of the United States signed 200... Both, there was two different presidents combined, 202 presidential proclamations. 170 of them were related to honoring days, weeks, or months. And the White House has a bigger staff than we do to vet these kind of requests. So during that study session, we talked about, like, you know, who could vet these things and, you know, try to keep us from controversial things like religion and politics. So I looked at the presidential list as a way to kind of outsource that kind of vetting. And in 2021, there were 72 days, 40 weeks, seven combination day and weeks, like we had just a couple of weeks ago, and 58 months. So that's 170 days, weeks, and months that the president signed proclamations celebrating. So I don't think city council wants to do all 170 of those. So if you like this idea of kind of using the presidential proclamations as a way of vetting things or kind of as a shortcut to helping us create that annual list, that I would encourage each one of you to go online, or I can give you the list, so we can look at which ones are important to Troy. So that's something that in the memo, I kind of introduced the idea of the presidential proclamations, but I did not give you, you know, a spreadsheet full of options, because I thought that was too much at this point. So that's, you know, something that would be helpful, getting some feedback on, you know, do we like using that, the presidential proclamations list, as a way to kind of help us create our own list.
Mayor, just one quick thing. The feedback doesn't necessarily have to be here tonight. You could also provide it to us, send it to me individually if you want to think more about it.
Which is sounding better and better. I have a quick question for Bob, though, about that list. Do you have any information on whether or not those president... How much variance there is in the presidential proclamations by president? My concern is we tie ourselves to one, and then it... I don't want to necessarily use that as the touchstone when we're trying to avoid some of the political aspects of things.
Anecdotally, they're pretty consistent. If we look at the ones that Troy has done in the past that are on the list, they have and different presidents have repeatedly recognized those days. So they're seeing... And like I said, I didn't want to do too much work in that direction, but there does seem to be a kind of a core list of annually recurring days, weeks, and months that don't very much with the presidents or parties or politics or anything like that.
I think procedurally, my concern is I'm not sure really how we finalize this list as this body without sitting in a in a public meeting, trying to go through them, which doesn't make sense. I guess privately, we could submit, but what happens if three or four of us want one, but not the rest? I don't know how... I mean, and again, I'm putting you not on the spot specifically, but it just seems difficult. I think the idea is we want to get away from having to make judgment calls here, right, which you spoke to. But there's still a judgment call in figuring out which ones make sense for our community, because I may think something makes a lot of sense for our community, but Ellen may not, right? And she's probably right. So I, you know, I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm trying to struggle through. And, you know, we had a study session, and I don't think we need another study session to go through this stuff. And I don't also think necessarily seven of us can sit through and read through 170 proclamations. I mean, I would, if that's what was necessary. But I just am wondering if, I guess, what anybody else thinks. Mayor Pro Tem Erickson Galt?
Thank you, Mayor. At our study session, I think I made people's breath... Took people's breath away by suggesting we not have any proclamations at all. And just the reason I said that is exactly what you're talking about. How do we parse which ones we're going to do and which ones we're not going to do? It's really so entirely subjective. It makes it hard for us to come up with a... And then, if we come up with a list, then are we going to have to have a motion to amend the list? I mean, you really... And then in terms of the idea of we're trying to limit how many proclamations are being issued at a particular meeting, then having this list where you mentioned, like, some months, it's 10 of them, that really doesn't solve that issue. So I think what... One of the things that I recall we discussed at the study session was perhaps having kind of like a a dichotomy of, we have some proclamations that are given at meetings and others that perhaps are proclamations that are issued without any fanfare. And that might be at least a solution to the issue of the mayor having to read six proclamations at any one meeting. And then those could... Those ones that are issued without any fanfare could maybe be ones that are not particular to the community, whereas, like I saw, we just recently celebrated the Athens High Spirit Week, which is really an exciting event. And that's particular to our community. And I think if I recall correctly from our study session, that was one of the things that we talked about, was trying to keep the proclamations more focused on the community and less about state or national or international issues. So I'm just thinking out loud here. I'm not suggesting we make any... I mean, obviously, we're not in a position to make any decisions here today, but it's really hard in my mind to say this is in and this is out. So to me, I think the better solution might be, this is what's going to happen at the podium, and this is what maybe gets issued without ceremony. Just a thought.
Thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow, because I had some similar thoughts related to that. In that study session, I was clear, I do believe in the value of proclamations. I do think that those proclamations get at your values. They get at your spirit of who you are as a city. So I do think there's some value in doing them. And it's all about criteria. So I do like the, Bob, well done. I think it's starting at that criteria. And the way I read the suggestion to look at the presidential proclamations was not that we will take their verbiage, because I know administrations change, but more we would look at what ones they issue, and we would then make that language our own, or we would use our prior language that we have used for those proclamations in the past for like Asian American Pacific Islander Month. We'll use our verbiage that... And often, those themes change every year, and so we would make that our own. I think the way I was kind of tackling this was, it, I think, did a good job at kind of getting a little bit at, you know, what? What might be those proclamations? And I'm... I don't think this is a list. It needs more work. But I think actually, what it didn't get is the how. And I think this is what Mayor Pro Tem Erickson Galt is getting at. And one suggestion I wanted to put forward there is that, and I think it's a mix between also something that Councilmember Brooks shared as well, is maybe there is one, you know, this is the one swell swoop we sort of approve of, you know, of different proclamations. Although granted, verbiage can change year to year, so it might... It's good to have a chance to look at those year to year and what those look like. But maybe what we do is whether those are on a consent agenda, or they're listed as reports, is a lot of these would not be read. I don't want to... Mayor, I do feel for you. That's a lot of proclamations that you have.
I like reading, everybody. It's not the reading.
So my suggestion would be is that we still do, you know, we try to figure out a list as hard as that might be. We still do these proclamations. I believe it's important to support something like Asian American Pacific Islander Month and Black Heritage Month. But I think that maybe what we do is we have a criteria for those that we would actually, would be right into the record. And my thought was exactly what I think Mayor Pro Tem was just sharing, was something that is celebrating a local event or celebrating staff, like our former fire chief. That's exactly what we do. Or second, Athens High School, that amazing, their charity initiative. So something that is very local to our residents, like heroes, amazing things with a local, local flair in Troy, or celebrating a staff member. That those would be the only ones that we would actually read into the record. And the rest, I don't know procedurally how you do that. I don't know if there's kind of issues with that, but we'd still have those. And then with our new communications capacity that we're hoping to have in the new fiscal year, that that person could then take those proclamations that are not read in the record, but put them, as other cities do. I have an example of one here. It looks really nice. It's nicely kind of formatted. You can put these then on your website, and then your communications professional can push them on social media, and we can retweet them and share them. But they're not something that, Mayor, you have to spend a lot of time reading. So that's my kind of middle ground, the way I'm kind of thinking about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Anyone else over here? Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely think the ones that are right at the podium should have very much a Troy focus. Tonight's proclamation to the fire chief, a former fire chief, was a great example. Last week's proclamation to the, you know, the Red Hawk Student Council, same thing. Otherwise, it dilutes the value when you have four or five, when people start to tune out, which is the exact opposite of what we're trying to do when you have the proclamation. So I feel strongly that what gets read at the podium is very Troy-centric. I'm not necessarily opposed to having a full suite or a full year's worth of proclamations maybe approved at the beginning of the year, part of the consent agenda, and it doesn't come up at the council, the regular council meetings. The one thing that hasn't come out tonight, but was very much a concern expressed during the study session, is that sometimes the content or the language within the proclamation is unintentionally provocative, or perhaps misleading, or could be interpreted in a way that causes uproar. And we all saw what happened last October, where something that was intended to be a more joyous proclamation turned these chambers into something that did not bring joy. That puts staff in a position of vetting out facts, what may or may not be, you know, a political landmine, or a religious landmine, or any combination thereof. And I don't think we have quite solved that issue yet. And I think until we get our arms around that, whether we approve in one fell swoop, or on a consent agenda, and we don't read them out loud, I'm not sure we're adding that much value, because we could step in it again, because if you do... If you do publish the one that was last October that caused all the controversy, and it gets printed everywhere, or it's on the website, it's still being publicized in a way and misused in a way. So I think that's the toughest nut to crack. But we have to crack it. Otherwise, anything else we do in terms of approving in bulk isn't going to do anything. Well, it'll help you not have to read 10, which I can appreciate. I don't want you reading 10 of them at every meeting.
I've never complained about that, just so we're clear.
You have not. You have not. You've been a real trooper, as have previous mayors.
Yes. I, you know, I'm... Did you have something else to add? Go ahead, Councilor Hoterick.
I think brevity on these that we would publish on our website would be key. And acknowledging I don't know. I'm trying to pick a topic. If I pick one, and even just talking out loud about a topic and using it as an example in this moment, so you know what's happening, I'm trying to think, so I'm not provocative, and that I don't create a debate about, well, Ellen Hoterick doesn't think that's important. So if you're watching and you're wondering why we're going through this administrivia, these proclamations are creating work to limited resources we have in our city staff and work for us as council members behind the scenes, sometimes the weekends before a council meeting, with consequential items about public safety or our roads on them. And we're trying to choose words, parse words very carefully on topics, because everything these days creates division. It's just the world we're living in. So we're trying to look at a business practice, if you're wondering why we're spending this much time, because it's important for the resources that we're using and the time we need to spend on things. And it's also important for us to recognize the spirit of things that are important in our community at the same time. So brevity on topics that we put, they could be certificates of acknowledgement of importance. Councilman Hamilton's nodding at me. And just, you know, yes, we acknowledge, and we say this is important, and we lift this topic up for the month of January, the month of February, the month of... But I think brevity on those topics, me saying this, I know it was ironic, is key. Go ahead, Councilwoman Abraham. We were thinking it. You can say it out loud. But that's the key. And then the topics that are Troy-specific, that are read in the record, that celebrate our Troy residents can stand out, and maybe those can be longer. Chief Reister's proclamation tonight was absolutely appropriate for a person who's given that many years of his life to a career. So I'm not suggesting that we would shortchange there, but just on the topics at hand. As to how to distill this, perhaps staff takes the first topics at hand. As to how to distill this, perhaps staff takes a first cut at a presidential list, and looks, knows the routine, you know the routine over the past 10, 20 years of what we've done. There might be some things that we haven't done that should be added. And you take a first cut, provide it to us, then we can each take that first cut, compare it to the whole entire list, and see where that takes us for our next step. Off line, and then come back together. I have a feeling we are more on the same page on this than we might realize. Would staff be willing to give us a first cut?
Yes.
Speaking of brevity.
So the city council has a list that we prepared in, I think it was in November, as a kind of a working list, in which was attached to the memo. So I think as far as staff is concerned, that's the working list. As I was sitting here listening, I had the thought of, maybe we should just start with a blank slate, and not have a list at all to start with, and have criteria that we would apply to requests, so that if there was a local request that involved health, and I'm going back to health, safety, and welfare, because those are three things that talked about, were talked about during the study session, and seemed to be strong agreement on. So if there was a local request involving health, that would get a city proclamation. If there was a local request involving safety, that would get a proclamation. If there's a local request involving welfare, that would get a proclamation. If there's a local request involving anything else, it wouldn't get a proclamation unless the president did one, too. So that's kind of one framework moving forward. But it gets, that would be a blank slate approach, which, you know, we can think on that.
I appreciate that, Bob. I, food for thought, and I don't want to belabor this too much longer tonight, for obvious reasons, but I'm starting to feel more like Mayor Protem Erickson-Gault at our study session, but only from this perspective. I'm wondering if it might be wiser to pass a blanket resolution in the beginning of an administrative year, affirming the presidential proclamations that are issued each year, and make them part of Troy's record in some respect, as opposed to trying to go through and pick one and choose one. Because I don't think, even with a new communications person, we have the resources to be drafting, and changing, and updating weeks and dates, and getting that, that's a full-time job, to do just that, and that's not what we're looking for. So I worry about that drain on you. I love some of the proclamations we've done over the years, and even the more generalized ones. I love that last year, we lit up City Hall for Fragile X Day, and that really meant a lot to a population in our community that had never felt appreciated. I don't think we can do that every year, and I don't think we should pick and choose which years we do what. And I'm just wondering if more of a blanket statement resolution, affirming all of the important awareness days at the federal level, or the state level, we can pick, and make that be what the city of Troy celebrates. I know that's not, it kind of goes against what you were just talking about, because I do think there's value in these proclamations, too. I just don't think, if we increase the list too much, we don't have the resources to do it. So I don't know where to go with that tonight, other than maybe we should submit some comments or thoughts to Mark and Bob, either an email, or on the phone, in the coming time period. I think that's probably the best way to handle it. I worry that when we start this process to make a better system, we're currently in the process of maybe making it worse, and I don't want to do that either. So it's kind of where I think we should leave it for tonight, if that's okay. Okay? Well, this is ironic. Next up, our council comments. Any council comments this evening? Here's the side first. Councilmember Hamilton?
Great job on State of the City, though it did not, it was not, there was no brevity with it. He still did it good.
No, I thought you were going to say it wasn't long enough.
I love the outtakes. It was excellent. Everyone loved it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton.
And thanks to the chamber, too, for this.
Absolutely.
And Ellen Carroll.
Ellen, yeah. All right. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Well, that's exactly what I was going to start with, with thanking the mayor for State of the City. I think most importantly, people just had that sense of belonging. And I do like hashtag where we belong. I saw you using it, Mayor, so that's great. It just has a sense of pride. People are proud of their city, proud to be there, proud of how far we've come. And I think with that, a big highlight was invocation. Just seeing our beautiful community, our religious leaders up there doing a joint invocation was really beautiful. And with that spirit of belonging and equity, I just wanted to highlight, you know, we're in the last weeks of Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and just for a brief moment, just wanted to recognize our community. I realize that we're still working through our proclamations. And to clarify, when I mentioned kind of looking at the presidential, I'm not advocating that we use all of those. I actually was recommending we look at that and dovetail it with our existing list in some way. So no, I would not advocate having over 100 proclamations to add any extra work to anyone's, what they've been doing. But just want to recognize, and say to that community, you belong, and that we see you, and we're grateful for all of your contributions here in this community. You are my neighbors, you are my friends, you're my coworkers. And so just wanted to really highlight that. And kind of in that spirit of inclusion and diversity, wanted to go back to the State of the City mayor, and say that I really liked your focus on the arts and placemaking. You know, I'm quite passionate about placemaking. And I was reminded afterwards, speaking of diversity, I was speaking with the Global Troy, our Global Troy Advisory Committee, and was reminded that, in my first year on that committee, we developed a public art project with Sean, the former head of that project, that was all about our diverse cultures and communities finding ways to bring that into public art. So if it is something through council consensus that we take forward at some point, we'd love to see how maybe we could look back at an idea that actually was already created, and work with Global Troy around that, and to bring our diverse cultures into something like that. And then that also makes me think of inclusion, and thinking of placemaking. And wanted to highlight in our MML magazine this week, my hometown, where I was born, Shalway the Beautiful, that is his nickname, is highlighted, some of his placemaking work. And it's a different community, it has a very legendary sort of downtown. But the interesting thing about the article is it focuses on youth inclusion, and the role of youth in coming up with placemaking ideas, and being a key part of that. And so again, it just kind of speaks to inclusion, whether it's our youth, and we saw Ms. Sailor today, who is inspiring to me, as well as thinking about Global Troy, and our diverse, our diverse beautiful populations here in Troy, and how we find ways to include them as we think about the arts and placemaking going forward. So, and actually, you know, I did a site visit as part of my board membership, and that was one of the things I asked them about, I went to Shalway, was asked them about their placemaking, kind of how they included their youth in that, and what they did. So I hope you will check out that article, it's also online in MML, it's the review. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Additional council comments this evening? I think we can look at all of those things you just talked about. I didn't mean to just bowl over them, but I definitely, as we move forward. Councilmember Hoderich?
Just wanted to mention that I'm seeing our Parks and Rec Department, and City Team, Police Department posting job openings that are in the city, and especially seasonal work, summer laborers, our Troy Family Aquatic Center, there's Safety Town Needs, a great opportunity as police service aide with our police department. And you can look at troymi.gov/jobopenings to see the list of jobs that are available here in the city. And as I think about that, I wanted to take a second, sometimes we take for granted our HR team, our HR Director, Jeanette Mettig, and all the work that has gone on. We see in the news that hiring right now is one of the biggest challenges for everyone everywhere. And you've been working a challenge even before it was making the headlines, as we added to our library, as we've done so much work. So you should know that your teammates often mention how much they appreciate you and the work you do, and out in the hallways, or if you're out somewhere. As a council member, I hear that. And I wanted to just acknowledge you and your team, and keep on keeping on, don't burn out on us, girl. We need you. And there's some really great job opportunities for young people. The city is a great place to work, and it's worth checking out.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoderich. Anything else? Very quickly, State of the City address. First of all, thank you to everyone who's involved with it. I bet it is on our YouTube, our city's YouTube, if you wanted to watch it, or listen to it. The text of the address will be also put on our website, but I recommend watching if you can, because there's guest stars joining me in videos. So I think that it'd be better to see it and hear it that way. And Thursday at 4 o'clock, we are officially dedicating the Gene M. Stein Community Park, right here on Town Center Drive, weather permitting. Well, we'll do something regardless. Right now, it's supposed to be thunderstorms, so I'm not so sure, but you are welcome to join us at 4 o'clock, if you'd like to be part of that. And we look forward to hosting many great events in that park this summer, including our farmer's market, our movie nights under the stars as well. And it's a work in progress as far as the grass grows, I'll be honest. Right, Kirk? Yeah. It's been a weird spring, I think, maybe that has something to do with it. So it'll only look better and better as time goes by. All right. That concludes council comments this evening. I don't see anyone signed up for public comment for items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. We do have a closed session, so I will recess, and we'll pick back up in the next session.